Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 12th School Committee Meeting for the Town of Foxborough. I'd like everyone to know that this meeting will be brought, is being broadcast live. We are doing it and is being recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. So, welcome and thank you for tuning in if you're from home and thank you for being here in the audience as well. First up on our agenda is open public comment. I checked the list 30 seconds ago and there's no one there, so there is no open public comment at this time. Next, we have on the agenda approval of minutes. We have the October 3rd minutes of the school committee meeting up for approval. If there's no questions or ideas, a motion to accept the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting on October 3rd, 2023.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Second by Brent, so motion by Sarah and seconded by Brent. Any further questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor of the October 3rd minutes? 4-0-0. I should have first said that Mr. Canfield is not here at the meeting at this time, so we are four members of the committee meeting, in case you did not see him. Next on the agenda is our teaching and learning highlight. And would you like to introduce it?
I will invite Mr. Stanton and our three teachers and counselor up to the guest table with him. They're going to be talking with you about the Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day that took place recently, and I know that they'll introduce themselves as far as the grade levels and everything they teach and everything about this program. And the PowerPoint that you're going to see with some of the images are just, it just shows what a fantastic day it was. So, Mr. Stanton.
Thank you. Thank you so much for letting us join you tonight. Excited to share a highlight. I'll start off with introductions. Mike Stanton and the principal at Taylor School.
I am Bianca Jones. I'm the counselor at Taylor.
I'm Sharon Roberts. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Taylor.
Sarah Sykes, 4th grade teacher at the Taylor.
And I'm Kristin Donovan. I'm a 3rd grade teacher at the Taylor.
So, this event was something special. It started actually across the summertime with the three elementary principals getting together. We do some curriculum work and we look for opportunities. If you recall, last time I was here is to present the school improvement plan, and this is an example of how sort of the words in that document come to life. And when we look at Pillar 4 about fostering, strengthening the respect and actions of staff, students, and families to celebrate diversity, ensure equity, and practice universal inclusion. So, as principals, we were looking for an event that could really capture and highlight what we were trying to come across in with our improvement efforts. So, to start off with, I'd like to share with you sort of the big picture. So, at Taylor School, every month, we have a whole school assembly. This is some of the actual slides from our whole school assembly. It starts with a greeting. That's part of our every morning. We do a morning message and a welcome. So, we welcome the students to this one, and it was introduce them to someone that probably very few of them had heard about, an individual called Ruby Bridges. And as you can tell up there, they were going to learn about Ruby Bridges and what made her so courageous and brave and what she did. Also, what we talk about throughout assemblies and we share this is we talk about some habits of being leaders. So, we talked about Ruby, and we try to find some figures in our everyday lives and through what we learn in the classrooms. But as students at Taylor School, we talk to the students about being leaders. They're able to do that even in kindergarten, that they're responsible. And this one that we really like the most personally for me is the second and the last bullet. The second one is I take initiative. I choose my actions, my moods, and my attitude, and I do the right thing without being asked, even when no one's looking. So, we set the stage for the sort of the big picture of why we were doing this, and we introduce Ruby. And I think when the teachers and Mrs. Jones speak, they're going to highlight, I think for me, what the biggest takeaway for the students was this was a real person that's still alive. That's very unique. A lot of times when we read at the elementary level historical figures, they're still not with us, or it's historical fiction or fiction, the characters that we're talking about. So, the students really learned about Ruby. They learned about her story. They learned about why her family moved. Her father was a sharecropper. They moved to New Orleans and he got a job, and then she was going to a school that was all for black students, but she lived closer to a school that was where all white children went. And she had to, she was required to take an entrance exam to prove that she could go there, and she did a wonderful job on that. And so, for Ruby, she was able to be the first child of color to be able to desegregate the New Orleans school. And the children, what we wanted to do is to have them understand what that meant. So, we talked about segregation. We talked about the civil rights movement. We talked about what it actually looked like back then. Now, for them, the year 2015 seems like, you know, ancient history. So, when we talk about, you know, the 1960s, 1963, when this happened, you know, we tried to make those connections for them and do it in a visual way that they could connect with as well. So, this was actually from our whole school assembly, and we showed videos about Ruby. We read about her. And so, for us at our school, we talk about the power of one a lot. So, the power of one could be one student, one class, one school, or one community. And sometimes when people think about one, we talked this since they think singular, but one group of people, one person can actually change the world. And so, it was a nice opportunity for us to give them a real example of someone who did that. And so, we also talked to these children about Ruby's teacher, Mrs. Henry. And as you know, without great teachers, it's very difficult. We're blessed at Taylor School in Foxborough to have amazing teachers. And Ms. Henry, I never knew Ruby's story, and when we talked about this as a staff, it's interesting. We've tried over the years to have what we're teaching the children reflect our children better and what they look like and what, you know, the values and their families look like. And so, for us, when we talked about Ms. Henry, her teacher, she came from Boston, and she went down to New Orleans and she taught. Ruby, on her first day of school, she had to be escorted by U.S. Marshals. She came in, she met the principal, she didn't get to go to class the first day. She was with the principal the entire day. Second day, she got to go to class, Ms. Henry's classroom, and she was the only student. Ms. Henry and Ruby had perfect attendance that entire year. They didn't miss a day of school. And eventually, over time, some other students came home, you know, as we read the story. I think their parents got tired of them staying at home, so they had them go to school. And thus, her classmates started to arrive. And it was really this power, and it didn't happen until many years later that Ruby and Ms. Henry reconnected when they were interviewed for a television program. And so, for the children, once again, to make a connection to their teachers, to be able to see Ruby Bridges, that's what she looks like, it was powerful. And then also what we did is we did a lot of homeschool connection as well. We sent home the videos that we shared. We sent home YouTube Read Alouds of the stories that we read. We sent home the messages to sort of explain the why behind this day, and so families could understand and participate as well. These are just some of the collection, the books that we brought, and I think for the students, one of the children told me, like, she must have been really important if she had that many books written about her. And it was true. And the book in the middle there, that was given to each classroom, and all the teachers read it and they discussed it. And we've purchased the other books for our library as well, for the students to be able to sort of take out as well. So, this is sort of a picture here and symbolic of the walk. It started with one step. And so, for our students here, walking down, and this was just one example of what we're trying to do to make our students not only better, you know, learn as strongly, but better people and citizens and being able to live in this sort of complex world. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Jones now to talk about some of those efforts.
All right. So, of course, as Mr. Stanton just said, this is not only just one day. For us, we have to incorporate this every single day, and the teachers at Taylor are incredible at doing this, and I can't speak for everything they do in the classroom because they are our highlight really of Taylor School. They are the ones that do this day-to-day because you can't just have one assembly one day, right? You have to incorporate it all day long, and they do a wonderful job at that. So, I just want to highlight a few things that we do as a school-wide effort to supplement what the teachers are already doing. One is we do use Second Step, which is a curriculum. It's a social-emotional curriculum. The teachers incorporate that into their morning meetings. It is spectacular. The kids really enjoy it. It's very engaging for the kids, and it has age-appropriate lessons for different things about being responsible, making good decisions, what do you do when life doesn't go as planned? So, that is one thing. We also, Mr. Stanton also mentioned, we do morning meeting and closing meeting. So, in the morning meeting, and that's due to responsive classroom, and in morning meeting, it sets the kids up to have a strong sense of community. And we all know, we come to work sometimes, we don't have the best morning. The same thing for kids, right? They're coming, maybe their grown-up at home was rushed in the morning, they were late for the bus, now their grown-up is, you know, off for the day, they get to school. So, the morning meeting is really a nice place to remind them, you belong here. And for closing for the day, it's a nice way to connect about highlights and even the lights of their day and sort of reflect and process. We also have Big Tiger, Little Tiger, which sets up our older students with our younger. And Mr. Stanton does a wonderful job with our Leadership Academy, with our 4th grade students, and they love that. They think that is, you know, they can't wait for leadership to start, and that's where they have a responsibility throughout the school. So, it really builds that sense of community, responsibility, and taking care of others. We have our buddy classrooms as well, an older classroom paired with a younger, and they do great activities together. And of course, I think the kid's most favorite is our kindness challenge, which happens every year. Last year, the students met their goal for their kindness challenge, and Mr. Stanton was duct taped to the wall. I don't know if any of you have seen the photos, but not a student at Taylor School will forget that. And of course, we have our monthly assemblies, and as Mr. Stanton said, I think some, there are some that are just so powerful and stick with us, like, when we first came back from COVID, he did the highs and eyes assembly, which reminded kids to look at the adults, look at each other in the eyes when you say hi, when you're walking, when you're getting off the school bus, and I say, "Good morning," I expect you to look me in the eye, and even if you can't muster a "good morning," you can give a wave. So, it's really reminding the kids of those connections that we have just because of the world we live in today, we have lost a little bit of. And so, Mr. Stanton does it with the highs and eyes, as he said, the power of one. And we really, I believe at Taylor School, everyone has a part in teaching, encouraging kindness, inclusiveness. And like I said, the school-wide efforts are great, but it's really the teachers who do it every day in their classrooms. So, I will hand it over to the teachers to talk about that. Thank you. Welcome.
So, as I said, I'm a kindergarten teacher. So, I had our youngest learners. So, when we left the whole school assembly, I was charged with, how do our youngest learners connect to this story? How do I make Ruby Bridges not be a storybook character for them? So, as Mr. Stanton and both Bianca mentioned, we start every day with a morning meeting, and that morning meeting is a place for a sense of belonging. So, I chose in my classroom to feature Ruby Bridges as the star of the week one week. Every student gets to be star in our classroom. Every teacher gets to be star. If you're part of our class, one week, you're the star. So, we had Ruby Bridges be the star the week before our walk to school. And I chose three key takeaways from Mr. Stanton's whole school assembly for us to share during Star of the Week. And one was bravery, and the kids got to share. We talked about how Ruby was brave, and then they shared stories of a time when they were brave, just so they could connect to, she had to be brave, how were you brave? How have you been brave? They talked about being a hero and what it meant to be a hero. Ruby was a six-year-old hero. My kids are five and six years old. You can be a hero. What does it mean to be a hero? We know superheroes, but what about everyday heroes? And we also talked about weather makers. We haven't mentioned weather makers yet, but one of the key phrases you hear at Taylor School almost daily is being a weather maker. So, we talked about Ruby Bridges is a weather maker. Ms. Henry is a weather maker. How can we be weather makers at school and at home? So, we took Ruby Bridges, and we connected that at the five-year-old level, just connecting to ourselves. And I actually have an email that a parent sent, not in my class, I'm not going to take any credit for this mother's wonderful email that she sent to another kindergarten teacher about her son and his takeaways that I'd like to share with you. So, she said, "In preparation for Tuesday's Ruby Bridges Day, I asked if or what," I'm going to substitute the child's name, "Bill," knew about her. He started talking all about her and gave me a surprisingly accurate history. It sounded like you read a story, and he pretty much recited the entire book back to me in his own five-year-old words. I was wondering what book you read to the class or what other activities you did to teach these kindergarteners about her. Perhaps I can share it with my high school students, and they'll remember more about the civil rights movement. We spent that evening watching most of the 1998 Disney movie about Ruby Bridges as a special treat. It is rated PG, so we figured the content was pretty safe for Bill, and except for a bit of language, it was a good movie. Bill kept interrupting and saying, "This is the part where no one went to school with her," or "This is when the people yelled at her, but she didn't listen to him." And it was impressive to see how much he retained from what he learned in class. Thank you for your thorough and age-appropriate lessons on Ruby and school integration. Good luck with the walk with 25-year-olds. So, this was from another kindergarten class, but just nice that our youngest learners just were able to take so much away and connect.
That's awesome.
So, to our oldest students.
So, I'm Sarah Sykes. I'm a 4th grade teacher. And for 4th graders, I was talking to Sharon and Kristin about this. I think empathy and being an upstander were the biggest conversations we had in our class. They know what it is to be brave, and they were absolutely, I want to say, I guess, astonished that this actually really happened to a six-year-old girl. And I think a couple of my students couldn't believe that the teacher, they're like, "Oh, my God, Ms. Sykes, the teacher was brave too," because not any other teacher stayed with her. One teacher did. So, for me and for my class particularly, and I talked to Ms. Curran too, it was more about what is empathy? Because in 4th grade, let's, many of the students, it's all about them, right? So, they were able to really sit there and go, I mean, some of their mouths dropped, especially during the assembly, but then when we read, and I also got to share a little film too, the one that wasn't better for 3rd and 4th graders, I shared that as well. And I've said, picture it. Close your eyes. You walk into school, what would you do? Every, "I would have said something! I would have said something!" I said, "Good, because that's what you need to do. You need to be an upstander, and when something's not right, you need to say it." So, that's how it affected, and we talked about character traits. We read another little book, I think it was Ron's Mission or Ronnie's Mission, similar situation. So, 4th graders are really responding to this. They were just sad. They were sad. They were sad, but they're learning a lot, if that makes sense.
In 3rd grade, it's like that sweet spot between where they're academically ready for like really understanding a book and really understanding the character and that this was a real person, but at the same time, at this time of year, they're still so innocent. And so, I think it was important that we spent not just one day on it, but it was several days on it or even a couple of weeks on it because of the fact that I felt like they needed to hear the story more than once. Because the first time they heard the story was kind of almost this fictional character, this fictional event, but the more we talked about it, when we actually watched like a Today Show clip where she was interviewed, they were like, "Oh, so this is, this is real. This happened." I explained that, like, my parents were alive when this happened.
Just the math alone.
Yes.
Like, how many, it became a math problem. Like, that was how many years ago? I said, "Yeah, it wasn't that long ago, actually." To them, it was, but I know.
But yeah, then they look at the grand scheme. It isn't that long ago. And it was also, so we focused on the fact how brave she was, and we really, that character trait, and we looked back into the text to find examples of her bravery. But the part that like stood out to me and to them is there's a part in the book where she's like saying something very quietly, and when she gets into the classroom, the teacher asks her, "What was it you were saying?" And she's like, everyone assumes she's like saying something to all these people that are attacking her. Like, she's this five-year-old girl, and there's adults that are so angry at her for trying to go to school, and they're yelling at her. And so, the teacher assumed she was saying something back at them, and she's like, "I was praying for them. I was praying that they would be forgiven because they're making a mistake," or something along those lines. And they were like, "She is that big of a person that she can recognize that they're the ones that are wrong right now, and I'm the one that's right, and I hope they're forgiven for that?" So, that part was like, they were like, "Wow, she is such this great person." Because of that, almost more than anything else, because they're like, "I wouldn't have been able to do that." Which I felt like, I was like, "I don't know if I would have been able to do that." Like, that's understandable. That doesn't make you a bad person, but this is showing like how strong she was at five years old.
And that's what I told the kids. I couldn't, and I know I'm not as strong as Ruby Bridges, even when she was six years old, or her parents, and then think about the courage that they had to send her. These are just a few of the pictures that we were able to sort of share from our walks. We have families join us, the students. We walked around the school several times. It was a very chilly morning, so we do, November 14th is significant in history, but we might look at moving up on the calendar a little bit. We didn't have snow this year, but we're going to look at that across the district. We're fortunate enough even to get a drone picture, it's actually the picture of the walk. You can see us down there around the school, Taylor School. And as always, we don't do this by ourselves, and you know that we have outstanding community partners, the Fire Department, the Police Department, you know, Chief Grace, Val Collins. She's not only a sergeant, she's also a Taylor School parent, and when I sent it to her, you know, the email in July, I think she got back a quick time later. I love it with about seven exclamation points, "Let me know what I need to do." And then also Sergeant Allen and our two SROs, Godino and Monteroso, Joe and Will, they're just, they're all wonderful in what they do, and they helped all three schools. So, we held this simultaneously across the Barrow, the IGO, and the Taylor School. So, it was a great message that, once again, that we're trying to sort of find that consistency and inspiration. And this was a book that we also shared, and you sort of heard about the power of one and being an upstander. And what I love about this is this sort of story takes you through to just how one seed to start a garden, one step to start a journey. And so, what we try to have these children understand is you don't have to always think big, you know, and superheroes don't always wear the capes. We saw some heroes that ran by us at the school. We cheered them on on Friday when the cadets came by, and we talked about the midshipmen, our everyday heroes that we have in the Fire, the Police, and your parents at home, your family members. So, this was just another way that, as you know, Kristin was talking about, that we sort of spiraled around, and we made as many connections and opportunities for the students to sort of connect with it. And then just ending with this, and I love that picture, it's a real picture, and you know, you heard that term, weather maker. You know, it's, we, our action, our mood, and what we do, we control the way. We can bring sunshine, and we talked about that. And the part that we love at Taylor School, someone's having a bad day, you can brighten someone else's day, and you can't have a rainbow without a little bit of rain and some sun though, too. So, I'm not sure if you have any questions for us or anything that you're curious about, comments?
Community members, any questions?
I think it's great. Thank you.
All good?
Comments from, yeah, what did you hear from the kids?
Thank you.
Just at your various levels, what were some of the takeaways that you thought your students got from it?
Again, mine was just more of, "Oh, my God."
Yeah, you mentioned it. Yeah, that's.
Wow.
It's important.
Mine wanted her to come to morning meeting. Is she coming? She might be busy.
That'd be good much, but.
That's great. Thank you so much for all the work that you put into that. It's really impressive, but not surprising at all, but still, just to hear you all detail it, from the structuring of the event to how it played out in your various age groups. It's just, it's impressive. So, thank you so much for your continual thought on this.
Yeah, I want to, I want to thank you too. I agree. Thank you for just taking this on and building this and spending the week. So, thank you for that. It's great, great event and great topic. Perfect. But I also want to thank you for your presentation. So, if anyone's paying attention, I hope they saw what just happened here. We had the principal talk about the leadership and things that he's doing and motivating with you as a team. Then we have guidance talk about the full kid, you know, K to 4 across the school. Then we have a kindergarten teacher tell us about how she approached weather makers at her level, and then you quickly came back with, "My 4th graders are older," and we talked about empathy. So, I think that's what's, another takeaway from this is that all of a sudden, we see this great event that motivates us to come around one topic, and you put the package together for all four age groups. And especially at the elementary level, it can shift quickly, can it not, right? So, I just really appreciate each one of your lenses and attention to each one of your grades. You know, again, right down the line, you just nailed it. You know, it just, yours is about perspective. The kids brought perspective to what she thought, and then we go from perspective to the next year to empathy. So, just great. So, I just think it was really well done, and I hope people pay attention to how these get put together by our educators and how much effort that takes to really add something to the school day.
Doesn't just happen.
It does not just happen, and it's not just numbers, and it's not just papers.
Thank you.
It's about really understanding how to bring it forward and bring it to life. So, thank you for bringing it to life, and thank all of your other colleagues too as well. You're here to receive it for everyone, so I'm just using you as the vehicles, okay? So, you're the weather makers at this moment.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. That was great. Wonderful.
It's our favorite part.
It always is. It always is. And it's so good to come out of the gate with these every meeting, just so we can really see all the things that go into the school day, right, in our schools. Just, just great. So, next on the agenda is our superintendent's update, and Dr. Bertus?
I'd like to start off the update with some congratulations, and I'd like to congratulate our Foxborough football team as being Super Bowl champions, and Coach Martinelli and his staff. And then part of that, I'm going to, since Nathan's here, I'm going to comment a little bit. So, the superintendent from Hanover after the game reached out to me about when, you know, you'll say it's about the win, right? And so, our team prevailed, and they won, and they're really excited, and if you're not the team that wins, that can be hard, but even though it's awesome to make it to the Super Bowl and all of that. But the superintendent reached out to me and said, "I just, I have to connect and say something about one of your football players," because after the win, this football player went over to our team to kind of congratulate them still and just kind of reach out because they're sad, let's face it, they didn't win. And I was like, "Well, do you know what number?" I mean, I was on the field too, but do you know who it was? Well, in the end, what I found out, it was Nathan. And just, of course, it was. And so, just for the superintendent from the Hanover Public Schools to reach out to me, I think that speaks a lot for the superintendent to reach out that way, to notice the number, to really notice what took place, but I think that speaks to the character of our students. So, I just wanted to publicly thank him for representing Foxborough so well.
Well done, Nathan. Well done.
I'd also like to thank the Craft Organization for their generous gifts for all of our students to be able to go with the tickets, two tickets per student, and then the boxes for our coaches' families and administration, and then all of us to be able to watch the game as well. It was a great turnout. It was a fantastic night. So, the Craft Organization has been great partners to us all along, and it's just one other example of that. So, we're very appreciative of that. I'd like to congratulate Lisa Downs. She was, found out last week that she was the MIAA Coach of the Year for Girls' Basketball, which is fantastic from the 22-23 school year. So, congratulations to Lisa, which is awesome. And then I'd also like to congratulate Joe Cuzak. Just learned that the Massachusetts Secondary Schools Athletic Directors Association, he received the MSSADA, so that group that I just said, Ted Demko Award, which is a reflection of dedication and commitment to interscholastic athletics. So, would like to congratulate Joe Cuzak as well. And then the other congratulations are to our many students that are being inducted into the Art and Science Honor Societies this week, so a lot of scholars, so a lot of congratulations to go around. As far as some announcements that I wanted to make, one of them, Jamie Quaterini, who is going to be the new administrative assistant in my office and to you as the school committee. She started today, was her first day. Janet was there with her all day to get her acclimated, and Janet will continue to support her. Janet's actually watching and doing school committee minutes, so thank you, Janet. We were not going to do that to Jamie on her first day. But anyway, you have her resume there with you. And thank you, Richard, for participating in those interviews. That was really helpful. And Jamie comes with a great wealth of experience, as you'll see in her resume. So I look forward to you meeting her at the January 9th school committee meeting. Just want to mention that after the New Year kindergarten registration opens up for next school year, you'll hear a lot more announcements will go out, but just wanted to go ahead and put that out there. And then I know it was mentioned by Mr. Stanton as far as the running of the ball last week. And then with the helicopter static display as far as in honor of the Army-Navy game, that was just awesome. We had it at the high school, and then to be able to have the community event out on the booth recreation fields, and to have all of the IGO students out there to watch them land. It just was an experience that you will never forget. And talk about our Foxborough, you know, public safety and all the police and everyone out there to make sure that everything was safe for residents of the community as well as for the schools. It was just an extraordinary experience. And one of the parts that was kind of, because the kids got to go in them and talk with, you know, anybody that was there. And they had to do a lot of safety checks before they left at four, because our kids tend to push buttons. And so one of the things that we heard, like they had shut off a fuel line. So it took a little bit longer with all of the safety checks to make sure everything was good. So.
Thank god.
Yes, but they, I mean, they are extreme professionals.
What's that?
But just the time that they took with our students and with the community and the residents was pretty, pretty awesome. So that was great. And then we had, or we have actually, students here from Perth, Australia, from the Hale School. They're here. Last night, we attended the concert, and that was with our jazz ensemble and the students from Hale. That is an exchange, I don't know if it's technically called an exchange, where they've been coming and visiting. And it really started back with an email to Steve Massey years ago. And about, it was five years ago. We had students, as you might remember, that went to Australia as part of that. And anyway, their concert last night was fantastic. They got to go and do a tour of Gillette today. So they are then off to, I think, New York maybe tomorrow. But we have some of our own families that were housing, you know, 15 boys, as they said. So not all in one house. But again, speaks to our community. So other concerts taking place, we've got some middle school concerts taking place with grade five and six. And then the high school winter, no, not, yeah, winter concert that takes place on Thursday at 7:00. The only other thing that I wanted to mention has to do with athletics, and it's something that came to my attention this afternoon. And this has to do with a, like, pullover sweatshirt for middle school basketball. It came to my attention this afternoon, and it is, a number of community inbox submissions came in. It has the letter F and basketball on it. So when you look at it, the question was, who approved this design? And, you know, basically what happened here? It was not approved by myself or the athletic director. It was middle school students asking for some kind of apparel to be able to have for basketball. And it was really a well-meaning staff that had arranged with an online vendor to be able to do this. Since then, it is being, Joe Cusack is, went directly to them to have it taken down. And they've also said that they could do some corrections, whether it's taking the F and putting, you know, a basketball over it or doing something different, because it really was well-meaning. But it was an image that it was not approved with the design or put out through myself or through Joe Cusack, the athletic director, and certainly not school committee. As you know, we will be putting together a committee going forward, but I know that caused, it was voluntary. And parents went and ordered it on their own personally. But again, we understand what came back, even though it wasn't something that was, you know, designed or approved by us. So I just wanted to bring that up. But they have said that they're willing to kind of work to do some changes to that.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Can I just add something to your update, which you might not have known? So the official of the year for Massachusetts gets nominated at the state of Massachusetts level and then pushed on to the national level. And so what happens at the national levels, they pick a coach from every region in the country. There's eight sections in the country. And we are section one in Massachusetts, in New England, New York, and New Jersey, section one. And Lisa was also selected as the girls' basketball section one recipient.
That's awesome.
Which is great. So she'll now be one of eight girls' basketball coaches being pushed forward for National Coach of the Year. So the national coach for last year comes out next year, because you have to get through one year to get the nomination. So it's kind of a year behind, but I just wanted, because you might not have known about that. So you were very aware of the Massachusetts award, but then after we submit the name, it goes national. So she was one of, I think, 10. Actually, Massachusetts had 10, which was very exciting for our state.
It's amazing.
Great for Lisa. So now she's one of eight, and we'll see what happens the next time.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bertus. Student report. Nathan, you're up.
I have three quick announcements. At the high school, student council is hosting a winter spirit week with winter items and a food drive. Winter sports have started with trials beginning the week after Thanksgiving, and there's eight days till our next break.
Thank you, Nathan. Thanks so much.
I missed that.
Well, next on the agenda, we have an item 2023-24 school calendar related to tiered focus monitoring review of seniors' last day. And I think Dr. Donovan is going to come forward and present that and speak to the committee about this. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. So we are in the process as a district of going through the tiered focus monitoring program through DESI. Dr. Burrows and Mr. McElazick have been leading that effort. And one of the pieces of information, they've completed our first kind of run of the review. And they've identified, and the final report comes in April, they've identified at the high school in particular that our last day for seniors is earlier than it should be. And so what the recommendation will be from them, we know, is to adjust, to be in the process of adjusting the last day of school for seniors. Just for context sake, Foxborough High has long had the first Sunday in June as the graduation date for seniors. And the law says that you have to have graduation within 12 days of the last scheduled day of school. And we have long done that. DESI is now asking for the last day of student classes or exams to also be within that 12-day window. And so that is really the functional difference. So right now, we're at about 15 days, and we've been around that number for the last couple of years. And it just really comes down to the location of Oral Day and the location of whether or not we're towards the end of the first week of June, and whether or not our last day of school is a Friday or a Tuesday, depending upon the weekends, right? So, so what we are, oh, so we wanted to notify you that that is in our future. And we have, there are some options we can look at, changing the last day of school for our seniors, which would be moving it to the, from the 23rd, which is now to the 29th. Or another option would be to wait until we get the final report and adjust, make the adjustments in the schedule for next year for the class of 25. I don't know if you.
I think you covered it. So really, what we're asking you as a school committee, we wanted to make you aware, because definitely for next year, when seniors look at the calendar, they might look back from years past and see that. So it's really a matter of kind of two options here, to take no action, understanding that when they come for their site visit in February, that we're going to have a recommend, a finding, if you will, that says that our seniors' last day is not in compliance with that law, and that we need to move that date to be in compliance. So our corrective action would be, so when you vote our calendar in January, you'll have at the January 9th meeting, the calendar put out there for discussion, and then it won't be until the next meeting in January that you'd vote the calendar. And we'd also need to put that out with our FBA, Foxborough Education Association, for that, to make sure that that's corrected at that time. Or you could make a vote to change, since school committee does vote the calendar, this current school year, and change the seniors' last day, as Dr. Donovan had said. So it's either really taking no action or making a vote to change and changing the calendar at this point in time.
Any questions from committee members?
I have a question. What is your preference?
If you have one.
If you have one. I hate to put you in the hot seat, but my first question is, you're at the helm there. What do you think?
I think my, my concern really is, I don't know if I have a preference, I have a concern, right? There are a number of families who have already made the logistics and are planning different things. We have, we do have some class activities that are planned for that week that we'd have to move around. So logistically, there's, there's a disruption at the school level, which we can manage for sure. I think my biggest concern would be about families and some of the machinery that moves the week before graduation for the, for the families of seniors.
Thank you. Brett? And as a reminder, when did we vote our, we voted the calendar in?
So you'll get the copy of the draft of it on the January 9th school committee meeting? And then you'll vote it at the second meeting in January?
Yes. I mean, we, the calendar we're currently working under has, was voted on publicly.
Almost a year ago.
Almost a year ago.
Correct.
Right? That's, that's being very transparent about what I think. That's, 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 that's my bigger concern. And could we change it? Yes. Could families deal with it? Yes. Could students deal with it? Maybe. But I just, I, I, I think if there's an, I don't think it's fair. So I, I, that's my, that's my opinion. We could, if we have a mechanism to correct it and comply within the regular cycle of our duties as a school committee, I would prefer that.
So the recommendation is the only repercussion?
It would just be a finding. And so we just want to be fully transparent. If something comes to us, we want to be able to bring it to your attention, since you vote the calendar.
No, absolutely.
And we get the report that says, hey, you didn't do, you know, we need to fix this thing. So if we have a mechanism to, if we have a mechanism to fix that thing, then I'm okay with it.
Sure, going forward.
That's just me.
I'm in full agreement with that, too. With my days of a high school principal, this review comes to all schools.
Yeah.
Mentions findings, brings, brings things to light that you can work on, attend to, address, develop, whatever those things are. And this is one of those that would be a finding, and it's very solvable for the future. But probably not now with the calendar that's already been set, plans that have been made, logistics that have been organized. So.
Not to mention curriculum. It's definitely gonna, it's gonna impact the flow of finals and different things like that, I'm sure. Again, everything we can manage, but there's a lot of moving parts.
There is.
May I, may I make a motion?
I don't think, well, you don't, actually don't need to.
We don't?
So, so basically, so basically, as I understand.
My motion would be to make no action.
There's no motion at all needed. So, so I think what happened here today, which is really, which is really prudent of administration, is to bring it to our attention. A finding that comes from the Department of Education is best brought forward to us in a timely manner that is suffice us for our committee work and our guidance and support you. And then from there, falls in our lap. So if there is no action, there is no action. So there is an action potentially requested, but if, if there is no action or motion from the floor, nothing changes.
I'm grateful for the information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the due diligence.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much for the information.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
Thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Bertus, for your information. Thank you, committee, for your thoughts as well, too.
We'll definitely take this into consideration going forward, planning.
Easy one to, yeah.
And it's Dr. Burrows and Mr. McElazick who have been doing all that work. So that's every six years, that cycle takes place. And then every, we have an in-between with special education. So it's really the two of them who brought that to Dr. Donovan and myself.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good. Thank you, Dr. Donovan, for bringing that forward. Next on the agenda is a preliminary discussion of our FY '25 budget.
So let me just start with what you have in front of you. So as you know, this is just the first pass of the draft budget. So even this afternoon, we were finding things. And so what you have, that Bill gave you, is three of the documents that you already had in your packet. They're just updated slightly, but we're going to go through all of this. And I think the PowerPoint presentation that goes through that you've seen in the past is the one that's going to help tell the story and then stopping along the way for questions. So we begin here with the timeline, and there's a lot of dates here, and I think that really is important to have. This is the first slide to highlight how much goes into this budget process, why it starts at the time that it does. It started in October with myself and Bill meeting with the finance director and assistant finance director here at Town Hall and to start talking about what are the needs of the district. And then we had a second meeting in November. And then after that, as you're aware, we had the meeting in the financial summit that came up. We had our school committee budget subcommittee, so Michelle and Sarah met for a couple hours with myself. And Bill, we're here this evening as far as the first public review of this draft budget. And then the dates that you see there will continue as we then have our own full budget to the town finance director. More review in January at our two meetings to continue. Any questions that you have or any more information? We know that we've given you a lot tonight, but a lot of times that causes and generates more questions. So anything that you're wanting in between now and the next meeting and the following, that we can provide that for you. And then meeting with the advisory committee, that's actually February vacation during that week, when we meet with AdCom. So some of you, you may be aware, I mean, be away, but I wanted you to be aware that is during the February vacation break with the AdCom meeting, and then town meeting for the approval in May. So really, the framing of this budget, it's very similar to the past in some respects, and then there's some changes as well. So what is the same is that it continues to provide the high-level educational services to our students that we provide. It adjusts for the shifting populations, for enrollment, for special education. And then also, when it comes to our newcomers, when we talk about the migrant and homeless crisis, with Massachusetts being a right-to-shelter state. It is definitely philosophically consistent with our historical approach between, with the town and the strong commitment to education. This town supports public education, has been very supportive of our schools, I think, starting off with the teaching and learning highlight, seeing from our youngest learners what takes place and the education that's provided to our students in this town. It's also targeting particular positions that have been previously funded by grants. We've talked a lot in the last few years about grants that are sunsetting, particularly going back to like the ESER grant as an example, with the ARPA funds from the last three years with COVID. Like, this is the last year of ESER III as one example. But we've also had other mental health grants that have come through for different purposes. So it does maintain reasonable class sizes. We're going to talk even about some of the class sizes and enrollment increases that we've had. It prevents, it preserves our current programs for students and services to students. It takes actions to address all of our strategic objectives in our plan for success. We know that that is our blueprint for what we do for students, the whole student. It also continues to address special education costs. Like, as an example, we're talking about the cost, you know, out-of-district placements as an example, something that we can't control, a 14% increase, even with our collaborative, a 10% increase as an example. Move-ins of students that come in with IEPs, and some of them significant. And then the increase in costs, importantly, and how we've developed with Mr. McElazick and all the work he's done in developing in-district programs to be able to meet the needs of students as they change, students that are here, students that move in, to have them in district where it is what we want to do for our students if, if we can. So developing those programs and keeping our students from going out of district is also a cost savings. Our newcomers, you're going to see some impacts with those numbers here specifically as part of that migrant and homeless crisis. I just want to, anybody that might be listening, is when we talk about our newcomers, it is referring to those students that are here. They bring a wide range of experiences. The needs, they're not, English is not their first language unless it's a homeless family, as an example. And English could be, but the majority of them is, English is not their first language. They come with very different cultural experiences, diverse backgrounds, and really a wide range of experiences. So adjusting to a new home, navigating a new country, a new language, a culture, as you can imagine, not just the English language development there, but there's a lot that goes to really having, to make sure that we are providing an educational environment that's going to meet the needs of all of our students, because they are our students. And then obviously, it also meets all of the guidelines that we need to abide by as far as being public education. So it reflects our priorities in our plan for success. You have those there at the bottom, those four pillars. I think the teaching and learning gave a great way of bringing to life, like pillar four, as Mr. Stanton and the teachers explained. And that those objectives throughout and all those strategic initiatives play out in this budget.
So the budget, as the two subcommittee members saw, but also as you have in front of you, is designed based on building level and then past building level into specific program level, whether it's something like the arts, the PE, music. program level, whether it's something like the arts, the the PE, music, those have their own breakdowns with staffing. The budget has basically about 450 total employees that represent the school district. And when we build the budget, 81% of our budget is salaries. And we build it from ground up, so we basically are taking every one of our current staff members and moving them forward as to where they would be on next year's scale, whether it's a step or lane change and or whether it's just a call to change, so that we make sure that we account for all the financial applications that that go behind each one of these employees. The concept the town has had for years and it's it, you know, for the last couple of years, it's been pretty good for us because we've actually had higher retirements than we typically would expect. This year, I think, is the year that starts the cliff going the other way because we did have so many retirements after COVID. Many retired, you know, at an age that they might not have normally retired just because I think they, you know, it'd been very challenging for them. So we're now down to a smaller group unless they go out early, which would not make a lot of sense for their pensions and stuff, smaller groups for the next couple of years. It looks like the next two or three years will be smaller before you start to get a little bit of a change. So the 125 will be a little bit of a challenge because the only way we get that is basically having a teacher at $90,000 leave and hiring a teacher at $56,000. So you have to have a, you know, three or four to make that work. If you don't have teachers leave and it's an assistant or something else, it takes a lot more to make it there. So I think that's, you know, represents basically our our one challenge that we always look at and kind of make sure that we can get to, but it's $125,000 that when we build the budget, we automatically deduct that 125 with the assumption that we should be able to find it with retirements. We obviously also take our total budget. It's an all in budget, includes everything we spend, including what we receive for grants. So when the taxpayers look at this budget, it's not what we're just asking for the taxpayers, it's what we're asking for the taxpayers plus what the state's giving us, what the federal government might be giving us and and total what the budget is and netting down to what the town's expense is in the process. As you know, out of the financial summit, excuse me, a little bit caught, out of the financial summit, the the concept that selection moved for was basically a three and a half percent level services with enhancements. Our budget at three and a half percent would be $1,426,810. Our budget's coming in higher than that. And basically, it's right now, it's at $379,477 more than the three and a half percent, which is just under 1% more. However, and the only reason I I'm we're presenting it tonight this way because we want it to be extremely clear to you and the community of how this is working. We are, the state has already or told us at the beginning of the school year, based on the the newcomers coming here, that there was a funding base that would be supplementing our our budget to allow us to hire the resources necessary to service these children that are coming in and to deal with other issues around that. You know, in some cases, it's class sizes get too big and we have to, you know, split a class. In some cases, it's it's language based teachers, and we had to hire more. So based on knowing that money's coming, but not knowing the specifics on how it worked, and we don't yet, we just know that the state has approved it on both the House and the Senate. It's now in Desi's hands to actually do the mechanism behind the money coming to us. So this year, as an example, these positions already exist that we're going to be showing you. They already exist, and we're looking for those funds for this year as well to obviously supplement the budget that the town has put through to cover us through the process. What we're anticipating getting exceeds what we are expending this year. We've kept our spending down as close, you know, to a lower number as we could just to make sure that if there were a hiccup on the state side that we did get caught. But in in making sure that you're very aware of what's going on here, right now, this year, under this program, we're spending about $561,000 more than our budget was prepped for to cover the cost of the services we're providing. An unintended thing, I think, that came out of it, and the state really didn't understand this fully, I believe, is that number of people that are moving into the district, whether they're migrants or whether they're homeless, had actually been registered in other districts, may have been Boston, Norton, anywhere, and the parents and the families would like to keep the kids in that district even though they're living out here. The state has a law, McKenney Vento, which basically says in that circumstance, those kids have the right to go back to the district in which they've been enrolled and to continue their education, and we have to transport them. The cost to us this year, normally that cost is we'll have a few, you know, people that get to this place, maybe they 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 lost their house and they had to temporarily come to Foxborough in an apartment while they're sorting things out. We typically have that on an annual basis. Anywhere from $15,000 to $25,000 that we spend in that range. We're going to spend closer to $150,000 this year. The other part of that, though, even though we won't receive it this year, the state will reimburse us under McKenney Vento for about 75%. They're talking about trying to do more, but about 75%. That will come back to the town in the general fund. It doesn't come back to the schools, and it won't come back until next year after the state report is completed, the audit that I do through the schools. Once that's completed, then it comes back to a reimbursement to the town. So the town technically will receive probably close to $110,000 next year to go into free cash from us, you know, dealing with this claim. And we should be getting enough money to cover that additional cost to us this year from the state funding that they have. The second reason we don't want to show this as an outside resource yet, we will show it before because we'll have a balanced budget before we go through there, is they haven't really talked to us on how they're doing FY twenty five. They've talked to us about FY twenty four, but they haven't talked to us about FY twenty five. So I wanted to be very clear to everybody to manage the process that's been put on the school district to do and to do it properly. We were fortunate to find the staffing. We found, quite honestly, L teachers are, you know, the diamond in the rough right now, trying to get them, and we were able to hire the the three that we needed to service all three levels of our school system. But we were aggressive and did it upfront, and I think that's kind of the difference, knowing what we knew as far as financing, that we could afford to do it if they if they gave it to us. So I think, you know, in our final budget, you'll see an outside resource line that basically is state funding to match whatever our difference is, but we know it should be under what this should be giving us for FY twenty four. The other thought is if it's we're under and we're able to carry the money forward, that gives us some of the cushion for FY twenty five as well, even though we expect they're still going to have to give us money for FY twenty five. So I know it's a long winded, you know, conversation of what we're doing, but to be extremely transparent to the the town and to the taxpayers and to you, we didn't just go out and spend money more than what we had for a budget this year. We're not proposing that we spend money just because, you know, we want to for next year. We're doing it based on the fact that we have state funding that's that's allowing us to do that to fit these services. And without these services, quite honestly, we could not have taught these children. So.
Can I ask clarifying?
Yep.
The 379, 477?
Yep.
Is that a number related to the newcomers purely?
Yeah, actually, the newcomers number is 561, so it's even more than that.
Oh, you said that, yes. And that includes the 150 that's transport?
Right.
OK. And then the reimbursement through that law is for transport?
The reimbursement for McKenney, it's actually like a double, if it works the way it should, it's almost like a double benefit to us. We will get the money promised for servicing the children, which would be more than enough to cover the 561. And then we should still get the McKenney Vento portion of that back because those kids that are getting transported to New Bedford or Boston or whatever, we aren't getting the reimbursement on those kids. So McKenney Vento is the reimbursement for those kids because our only cost is that transportation for them to go back to the district. Obviously, we're not we're not teaching. You know, they're taking that trip.
So this next slide, you have this in your packet. And so what I'm going to do is to go through, as you know, every year, we take every single line of every single individual in the district, and we budget year to year. So in some cases, things happened last year during the year that impacts the budget going from FY twenty four to FY twenty five changes, and then obviously, big changes like our newcomers. So if we go to the left part of that slide there, we have newcomers to start out as an example. So that's this year, as a result of our 48 students that are new to Foxborough based on the migrant crisis, those students, it impacted our budget at the IGO. Here's the specifics here. So in October, October 20th, actually, we added an additional kindergarten class. That was hard to do. Our kindergarten teachers at the IGO, they were involved in that decision, but it really speaks to the quality of our kindergarten teachers at the IGO and what they were doing in the beginning of the year. Their class sizes started to expand very quickly, not just because of the number of students, 10 actually, with our newcomers in kindergarten alone there, but also other move-ins that we had. So in October, we reshuffled the three classes. We moved them into four, really a great testament to the principal there and our teachers and making that work and our families being flexible. And even with that, having that move to four classes, we still have 20 to 21 students per class. So that gives you an idea of the move-ins aside from our newcomers and the impact it had on kindergarten at IGO. In all of our kindergarten classes, we have an educational assistance assistant full time, which helps with the ratio of our students, which we're really fortunate to have the town support that within our classrooms. So you have a kindergarten teacher addition, you have an educational assistant teacher addition. When you have an additional class, that's going to impact your other classes, such as when they have art a number of times a cycle or wellness or Spanish starting in grade one. So we had to increase some of our other specialist teachers in order to accommodate the additional classroom and kindergarten. So that's where you see a point one increase for the art teacher. You have a point one increase for our wellness teacher. And then, at the same time, students that come in with some of the IEPs, they are some behavioral supports that have had to go into play there. So you have a point five position there. Same thing took place at Taylor. Again, we have our newcomers at Taylor and at the IGO. So a lot of adjustments that took place with our teachers and staff, but they'll also tell you what a wonderful experience that it has been with our students. The world language increase, again, that's a result. We've gone, what you see next there were student services, the three English language learner teachers that we were able to add as an example here. It's not just the students that have come as newcomers. We've had many other students that have enrolled that are either moving in with families in Foxborough that do not speak English or just have moved to Foxborough. So as an example, we now have 140 students that English is not their first language. Just to kind of give an idea, when I came 13 years ago, we had seven. We now have 140. So in order to meet the needs, and they're all at different levels, when we think about, do they have any English at all or do they not have English at all? That is based on levels. So you can imagine a level one student with absolutely no English is going to require more service delivery. So having the L teachers, so we now have right now, one at the high school, two at the middle school, two at the IGO, and one that is shared between the Borough and Taylor. We have a total 140 students. As far as regular education, we also have seen enrollments in Foxborough aside from this. So as an example, in the new developments that are down 140, like that's the Taylor School District. So we've said increases there. So we had to increase based on enrollment, a kindergarten class and a grade one class at Taylor. And so even with that, we still have class sizes like in kindergarten of 23 by adding that, and that took place after, you know, the end of last year and seeing what those numbers were. That's the tricky part. It's another reason I made the comment that kindergarten registration starts in January. The more that we can get an idea of our kindergartners, we definitely see them over the summer. But again, register early. It helps with our our planning. And then the reduction of point two that you see, that was a reduction at the high school based on what you're scheduling and needs. And it was a class of a number of students in an upper level French class that then ended up graduating. And so then that reduced by point two. And then schedules were able to be reshuffled with our staff to make the schedules work. In the area of special education, as you've heard many times, our district wide programs at the elementary level, we have special education programs housed at each of the three schools. And those programs have expanded over the last number of years in order to meet the needs of our students that are here, to retain them in district, and then also the number of move-ins that we've had. So it was a result of that, like as an example, the DLC program at the Borough. Last year, that program services students with significant global needs. And based on the number of students that were coming up from preschool and that also moved in, we had to split that program at the Borough in order to meet those needs for students because we had an increase in students, and then we also had a wide difference in the global needs that were presented there at Borough. The other teacher at the Ahern where you see there, that, and this might ring a bell from Mr. Michael Azic's presentation from our PAVE program. So our PAVE one and our PAVE two program, the number of students there, we increased with students that were move-ins from other districts. And the needs, you've got one PAVE program that's really more moderate to significant needs, and then the other program is much more significant needs. So those are two separate programs with two special education teachers with different licenses in order to meet the needs of those students. An educational assistant, the bridge program at the high school, in order to meet students that might be coming back from hospitalization, there's a wide range of needs for needs at the high school as far as students that are coming back. They might not be back full time, might be medical related, a lot of needs there. So that program is a bridge back into school. And so you have an educational assistant there. Our preschool program has continued to expand in the variety of needs of students. We're seeing more significant needs in preschool, and this really reflects reality of what's taking place. In the past, our preschool coordinator has been a point five teacher, point five coordinator. And you also have educational assistants in the class. In years past, the point five teacher part, the teacher's not been there as much. We've had to put in a sub, we've had the educational assistants, and that's because of all of the team meetings and the other things that take place with being child find and the preschool coordinator. This year, we have the preschool coordinator, as you know who is new, and she is doing that full time. And we're seeing that it because we wanted to see how that's working out, and it really is a need to be able to have the coordinator there full time. Can be in more of the classrooms at the same time, but really in reality of what was taking place, it's a full time coordinator position. So that's where you see the point five that's there. The speech therapist, actually, during the school year last year, that was a point seven position. Based on these growing needs and speech service delivery, it needed to increase to a full time position in order to meet the service delivery requirements of IEPs. The social worker was grant funded before. We talked a lot about the needs there from past budgets as well as through COVID and mental health supports. So that was grant funded, and and we see that that really is an important need to continue as we move forward. The psychologist caseload, this reflects reality. Again, two years ago, it was a point five position. The person that retired from that was constantly, we're having to have her come in more than point five. And so that was increased in order to meet the the caseload that in the testing that was taking place. And although that's an elementary, I can just give you an example, even recently, the testing at the high school, we were able to take the psychologist from the elementary, go up to the high school and help with some of the testing that needed to be done. So they work really flexibly and collaboratively with the needs, but it is a need that has been taking place in reality in order to meet the requirements. And the occupational therapist position, you might remember, two years ago, we had a Coda, which is an assistant, and we moved from a Coda to a occupational therapist because there's certain things that a Coda cannot do, and we needed to be able to have that. And so we did not have that change in the budget last year.
Yeah, we we accounted for the the Coda leaving. We didn't account for the OT coming in.
Yeah.
And when we went back looking for it, it was one of the lines that actually got missed in the process. Unfortunately, when you add something like that, unlike every position that exists, which we can look right into our systems and see.
Right.
You don't see ones that you're changing, and we just, I missed it. We missed it.
And the the last few that are there, the assistant transportation manager increasing by point one, it was a point nine position. You've heard about the bus driver shortage. Out of our transportation manager and our assistant manager, I think daily, one of them are driving. And sometimes we have both of them that are having to drive and, you know, Bill's down there having to listen to the walkie talkie to make sure that if anything is stated back, we've got somebody in the office to be able to respond because they're both driving. So that was just a critical need. Our wellness coordinator, this is Amy Muldowney, who's been here before. She actually will be one of our highlights, talking about the community resources and what she does with our counselors and staff in January. This has been a grant funded position. The grant is going away. We only have enough for a point five. So we're just reflecting what the grant is. If we're able to get additional grant funds, we would want her to be able to be, continue. But it's, we know that it's a grant funded position. So that's just being completely transparent there. And the last two, so at FY '21, we started the fifth grade language-based program at the Ahearn. And with those students as well as other move-ins that have continued, that cohort of students is now moving to the high school. And in order to keep, and that was a program that was developed in order to keep our students from going out of district. Those students are now going to the high school next year. And so that's what you see as far as really the first.
There's a whole group behind them, but this is the first wave, which is not kids.
So that's really a true new position at the high school in order to take the beginning of those students coming forward. And then.
When did we, when did we bring them in-house at?
In FY '21, when they were fifth graders. And so.
That's when it was.
At that time, we had seven. We've had additional, we're now at nine with additional move-ins based on the needs. So it's, the, the amount that, when we get to the slide that shows how we've decreased the number of out-of-district placements, that really does support all of these things that you are seeing here.
Right.
And then the last one there is, so again, our three programs at the elementary level, we house our therapeutic program over at the Taylor School. And based on the increased number in students there, we have a, a need for an increased educational assistant because you want students to be able to have inclusive opportunities in classrooms as much as possible. And in order to do that, an, an additional educational assistant based on the numbers that are there is really required.
At this point, the budget really only reflects three expense items, although we're looking at one other. And we'll have that come forward if we feel it's necessary for the next meeting. The music program, the one thing that they've gotten hit with over, and we've tried to cover for the last couple of years, is just the significant increase in the coach buses.
Yeah.
So we have the Simply Ellington and we have the annual trip they make this year. They went to DC. The cost of the buses basically tripled over the last couple of years. So we need to supplement that budget to be able to cover that cost. We've also had an incredibly generous family in town. I didn't even know about this, who for years and years has had a van that they basically follow the music program to those away trips for the big instruments. And they, they actually take them, they drive and they follow them and they go to the things. And they've been doing it for years. Our understanding is that they, they may not be able to do that going forward. So obviously we have to pick up the cost of renting that van and having one of our people drive and follow the bus. And then because of the change in staff, as you know, we lost a, one of our music professionals that basically was a percussion specialist last year, I think, as Donnie left. That basically there is no other member that has that same level. So what they did this year to supplement it was basically bring in somebody just to work with the kids that during the timeframes that they needed. $1,500 was a reasonable way to do it versus having to try to go out and find a teacher just for that. So that made sense. We're carrying the cost on the McKenney Vento as an increase because all of our indications are is that the hotel will be rented for this year and next year. So the assumption is those same kids, we will be transporting again. And then on district-wide, as you know, we're in the NES process. So there's an additional cost this coming year of $5,000 in what we need to do for that process. So those are the only expense changes in this entire budget today. The only other one we're really looking at is our athletics because of the cost of all of the different things that we do, the rental of ice time, the cost that we have with Brigham Women's for our.
Trainer.
Trainer. You know, the, yeah, actually even some of the increases in the officials and stuff like that. So we're, we're going through the numbers now to see what those are and depending on how they come out. Well, that would be the only other change we know of at this point that we're looking at. The budget basically, as we said, is a level expense budget. It deals with, it reflects and, and we've calculated based on our current out-of-district placements for tuitions, that our current number will work going into next year. We always keep just a few dollars just in case we have a, a small one. But if we had a big one coming, obviously we'd have a concern on that. But we always would. And then obviously accounting for the cost of the newcomers and increased enrollment applications. The three things that were in the budgets in the past that we don't have the funding for going forward that were grant funded is one of the L teachers that we had before, the three that we added, we had three. One special education teacher at the Ahearn and one of our desktop support people in the tech department. Those, that money has gone away and dried up for next year. It won't exist, but those positions are in the budget as we stand right now. Obviously, the major components of the budget itself outside of salaries are, you know, the adjustments to the grants, level funding expenses, out-of-district tuitions and newcomers. Those are the, the largest components to this budget overall. Again, just looking at it differently, on one slide, you got the 19.2 positions we're talking about in the, you know, 132,000 in expenses. Show you a year-by-year comparison, which we've done for years. The budget will go from 40,765,995 to 42,628,392. And I want to make this point because I think it's very important that if tomorrow the newcomers went away, the majority, if not all of that expense that we've been taking on would go away and therefore the budget would drop by that. But also the, the revenue or income from the state will go away. So, you know, it, but it's, this is not something that is anticipated to be a forever scenario. But we don't know, what we don't know as far as how the state is working with this. So we, we calculated based on the three and a half percent and, and we're calculating that the 0.93% will be covered through the newcomers' funds from the state side. Dr. Burrow said on the enrollments, I think what the, we finally have started to crest back upwards. And you can see it's on the elementary level, which means obviously it's going to move forward into middle and high school over years. But, you know, going from FY '23 at, at 862 to this year at 936, even if you take the students that are on the, from the newcomers out of that, it's a fairly large increase on our side. We haven't seen that type of, of movement in quite some time. So, you know, again, we've been, you can see back in FY '18, we were 2,600 students. We're still, you know, well underneath that. But we had, we had said for years that it was based on a platform of, of, you know, basically houses now starting to switch over.
Yeah.
You know, as older people move out, younger families move in, the, it goes. We don't have obviously a huge stock of housing that can be built in town. So it's, it's going to be that type of a slower mover that will make the changes.
And I think the other piece too, just to go back to my previous comment here. If you look back to FY '21, our out-of-district students, you see there, we have 38 students at that time that were out of district. And when you're talking out of district, it's not just the tuition. You're also paying transportation on top of that, which is significant. So though, building in these in-district programs, it increases your number of staff for special educators, like when we needed to split the PAVE program or the TEAM program. But that's where you see the numbers decreasing as far as the cost, which is a much larger cost savings. It's better for students to keep them in district, but to be able, we need to build programs that are going to meet the needs of the students that we have in our schools. And so I think that's an important slide to really look at. From FY '21, when we started building more of those programs like that language-based program, you can see the numbers. Now, special education, it's fluid, it could change in a day as far as when we talk about costs. And we've talked a lot about that. But when you're looking at the special educators or educational assistants and the programming, it's about keeping students in district. And those are the numbers that are reflecting that we are keeping more district, students in district and having students come back to district.
And I think just for, in perspective, a student on a typical out-of-district placement with transportation, transportation is running close to $35,000 for one student. And even if you looked at one of the lower level programs, cost-wise, you're at about 60, 65,000. So that's 100,000. And some of our programs go all the way up to 440,000. So every student that you can keep in an inclusive model, that they can stay in their own neighborhood schools and that you can service, again, they're not spending an hour in a van driving, you know, to Waltham and back. They're not, you know, going through that process. You're, you're basically making a part of the community and keeping him as part of the community. You've done a much better job. And the benefit to the community is if you do it right and you obviously have the numbers that we have as far as number of students, you also have the potential for some savings. But it's not a huge savings, but I think it's overall, it's a savings to the, the budget, but it's also a benefit, greater benefit to the families and those students. So it's the right thing to do. As we always talk, grant funding goes up and down and all around. Obviously, coming out of COVID, we had money that was just somewhat ridiculous that we were getting thrown at us. That's one of the reasons we gave so much money back to the town. In, since COVID, I think we've given back almost 500,000 a year for the last three years. It's not because we budgeted and didn't need the money. It's because we got so much grant money that we used the grant money first and let the taxpayers have their money back into the, the town's pool. And, you know, so, but now again, with all of that finally drying up, which we knew would come, we're back to more normal grant numbers that we would see. Our Title I grants, Title IV grants, our, you know, 94 grant. Those are all typical grants we've gotten forever. And typically you would, they're fed, most of them are federal-supported education grants. Most of them are specialized in, in different ways. The Title I obviously has benefits and it's mostly to the IGO school. And there's even a, a kick on that one for the first time. We, we actually got more money this year in Title I. But we got it because the town hit a poverty level, which was kind of mysterious. We went from 3.7 to 5.2%. And 5% is what the key is to get the next two chunks of the money that's under Title I. So we're getting it this year, but we don't believe we're getting it for next year. And there's no way you can guarantee it. So we're not budgeting based on getting that money right now just because it's, it's kind of a fluke that, that there was such a big change going from those percentages. So, I mean, if we get it, fine. Again, you know, you know how we spend money. We give back to the town if we have the extra that way. So we're not concerned about that one, but I don't want to take the chance that we budget to be in there. And we're losing another 130,000 in the process. You can still see we're going up and part of that is because of Circuit Breaker, which is a state reimbursement on special ed, which has continued to give up the, a better percentage to the communities over the last three years where they're giving us more back. I will say Cory and, and his team have done a great job capturing all the costs that we could claim, you know, at a higher level so that basically we're putting in every penny that we spend for services for the children to get that reimbursement. And they also kicked in transportation, which they didn't have before. So we get a transportation number now, which is, is also beneficial. So that's kind of kicked that number up and there's no signs that they're going to drop that one down because that's valuable to every community. Just so you can kind of get a visual of the, how the money is spent, little bit of a swing between regular ed and special ed. And that happens, you know, year to year, back and forth. The other percentages have stayed very, very consistent when you're looking at, you know, operations and transportation and central admin and technology. Again, this does not cover any CIP-related expenses. And you, you know, we've mentioned before, one of our biggest concerns is the cliff in technology. We did use all that COVID money to buy the one-to-ones for, for the students. It's now been ironically almost five years. And, you know, we're, we're looking at how do we now survive that next changeover when we need to do it? And it's going to be, it's expensive. So it's, that's something on the CIP level that we're going to have to really investigate and have a, a good plan for moving forward.
And that student services piece, that includes our L teachers. So when you see special ed, that percentage, so the student services part is the L teachers.
Yeah, that's what actually bumped that percentage up this year.
So as far as next steps, we're continuing to review just as we were doing, you know, all throughout today, giving you, you know, hence the updated documents that you have here. We will continue to go through those, such as some of the expenses, like whether it's ice time, if there's a difference there for after the new year and finding out any of those changes. Review with you again on January 9th. But if there's any questions, I mean, obviously this evening, but any things, additional documentation. You have a lot of other ways to look at those numbers with the documents that you have there. So it's a lot to digest, but it might again garner different questions that you want additional items from us. And then the vote would be the January 23rd meeting for school committee.
We as a department are, are the first to complete budgets. So we're, we're nearly a month ahead of the requirement on the town side, but that's their requirement. Obviously, we have a different requirement as far as process and timing. The only negative to obviously starting in October, when you're just starting a school year, is that's why we do continue to make some adjustments to this because we're learning more as things are happening to us during the year. Trying to budget, you know, nearly a year ahead of what you're going to be facing is, is kind of daunting. But I think we've, we've done well over the years, continuing to adjust right up to the last time when we, when you finally have to make that vote if there's any issues that we see.
Committee members, any questions?
Just comment, thank you.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you very much. This is not an easy process, never is.
Can I ask, just CIP, you just brought CIP up. Is there anything we're worried about in CIP buses? I, I'm trying to recollect where we are with the buses. We skipped, we skipped one here and there and, but you're comfortable kind of moving forward?
We got the, we were able to last year with, again, with some of the grant money, giving us extra money at the end of the year. Having extra already within our budget, we went to the CIP to say, could we buy some of the buses that they hadn't been able to buy?
Yeah.
They did approve that. So we basically are right back on schedule from where we fell off after COVID. So our bus, you know, fleet is, is in good shape, but you still have the basic requirement of three a year based on the fleet to keep it going. I will say, and I've always said this because I do do a comparison and, and I kind of like watching the lift serve because many communities haven't kept the bus services in town. And as much of the struggle as it is for us just to get drivers, when you look at these big companies and you obviously probably have read what's happening in Framingham where they're short 100 bus drivers and not able to, to go out there and actually produce the, the routes for the families that need to be done. We're a smaller microcosm and if we can keep our staff in place and we can move forward, we are a much more cost-effective process than the, what the bids are going out now because they know that all these communities are kind of in trouble. And that, so what I'm seeing in new bids for, you know, bus services to, to communities that don't own their buses, the percentage increases are unbelievable. And we were under them to start with because again, we don't have that profit basis. We don't have, you know, any of that aside of it that we're dealing with or the corporate taxes or anything we have to deal with. We don't even pay taxes on our gas because we're a municipality. So our costs are, you know, intrinsically lower in, in keeping us, you know, able to do what we're doing. And to be honest with you, if we could just get a few more drivers, we would, we would have, you know, one of the best of all worlds. I think we've got a great team running it right now. The Lynn and her team have done a phenomenal job, kind of picking up the pieces with Dennis and Kathy leaving. The Lynn and her team have done a phenomenal job, kind of picking up the pieces with Dennis and Kathy leaving. I think they've done really well. And I think we have our own training group. So if we had anybody in town who wants to, you know, become a bus driver, we train them. They don't even have to pay for that, they just have to go through the process, and we work with them to get through DOT. So it's, you know, we're looking forward to, to trying to just get a couple more drivers to, just to make it so that again, the, the two managers could stay in the office and manage the process versus having to be out on the road. But other than that, it's working well for us.
Thank you. And my only other question, although I know, I think food services, anything in food services that's going to change for us? We've been very fortunate for a few years here for our students. I just don't know if that, if anything changes there that impacts our budget, but I don't think it probably does.
So the only thing that impacts the town budget is if we had defaults on payments for what kids, you know, take. But now that it's free, that's, hasn't been an issue for a number of years. In talking to, you know, Representative Barrows and Paul Feeney, they're very concerned as whether or not the state can continue to do that program, because it's a billion dollar program. But I will say one thing, it has done for Foxborough because of the reimbursement rates and because of the number of kids that are taking advantage of it. You know, we went from about fifty percent up to, I think she said, close to seventy percent of the kids actually, you know, take the lunches and we get reimbursed for them. Our efficiency levels within the kitchens are, is phenomenal. You know, we're, we're, you know, putting out the meals with the, the staff that we have. We've had to augment some of the staff in different places to, to be able to handle the volume. But they have actually been able to, to build their kitty back up to the point where we've replaced almost, you know, all the major equipment in the, in the five schools that needed to be replaced. And they've paid, they've paid for it through the process, and they still have a good kitty that, that basically could carry them forward. So that process has worked very well. Extended day is the other one. Self-funded, not in our budget. Basically, their tuitions cover their, their costs. They've done extremely well as, as well over the last couple of years. And we've been able to keep the costs pretty calm, pretty neutral without increases. So I think overall, those two programs have done very, very well. But they don't, they aren't reflected in our budget because they are self-funded budgets. And they are required by state that way, too.
Do you recall the default number? Because it wasn't very large.
The default number was always, you know, in the eight or nine thousand dollar range for the whole district.
Thank you. Thank you for those two things. Brent?
Remember, a couple of years past, we had to adjust because of rising utility costs. Has that been holding steadily high?
I mean, again, obviously, everybody knows you're from your own home, and the town's no different. The utility costs have gone up. But myself and the town manager and, and outside consulting group for the last ten years have basically bought forward in contracts. And so we are actually pretty well protected for the next two or three years in our, in our rates for both electric and gas. Minor increases from the last contract thing, but not, you know, not substantial. And every time there was a dip is when we tried to go back out and take a look at whether or not we could re, renegotiate the rates and take advantage of it. So not real concerned about the utility rates. The solar farms have done what they were supposed to do. The money comes in against our electric accounts, so most electric accounts, we don't actually even pay bills. But we have to pay the company that actually put in the solar farms, and they get a percentage. I think their percentage is sixty percent, but it's still a forty percent savings to the town on all of our electric. So, you know, virtually that went in place, God, must have been nine, ten years ago, too. So it's been, it's been a real good program for the town without any real glitches.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're good. What else? Thank you very much. We're prepared now for the next meetings ahead, as we move ahead. If there's any other further questions, we can all reach out to you individually.
Yep, please do.
Whatever you might need for any clarity as you digest more numbers and whatever might be there. Yeah, it really is a lot. Well, we, we are very fortunate. We're, we're very fortunate for both of your detail to this. The detail to the, what we need to do, why we're doing it, and focused on what we do, and then the number crunching. I mean, those two things have to go hand in hand for success. So we're very fortunate that we have your success as a team. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, on the agenda was MASC, MAS joint conference. It was brought up by one of our, our members to, if there's anything to add about the conference. I was fortunate to attend, as, as you were too. And I didn't know if you wanted to offer any highlights. I could offer some, too. But anything you'd like to mention about the conference?
This was my first conference. It was a lot being a new member, a new school committee member. I really didn't know what to expect. And there's a lot. And there's a lot that I realized that I didn't know about being a school committee member. So this really opened my eyes to what be, uh, being a school committee member is. And it also gave me a perspective of where we are as compared to other school committees in Massachusetts. A lot of them are a lot larger, a lot of them deal with a lot more issues than we deal with, things that we're not think of. One of the issues that came up was the bus bidding issue. And that was very unfortunate. It was very sad to see that a lot of the other school communities were dealing with it, that they, one school district actually had lost, I think in the last ten years, they'd taken nine million dollars out of their education bus, budget to continue to bus other people. Now, unfortunately, we don't have that issue, but it was sad to see that. It was also sad to see that some school committee members don't get along with their superintendent. They don't work together as a team, they actually fight. And it's also interesting to see what other school committees are more concerned about as opposed to what we're concerned about. Like, we have a different environment, so what we are, find is important, isn't important to other areas, other communities. But I did, I found it very interesting, very eye opening. I, I learned a lot, and I enjoyed it. But it was overwhelming.
It is drinking from a fire hose the first time.
Yeah, it really is.
I would agree with you. You do, you do speak to a lot of school committee members from other districts, and, and they're very different, too. Some are very large committees, some are multi-town committees. So you do get that exposure. And, and I would, I would agree with you, in the years I've attended, and you've attended a couple of times, too. I, I was truly very appreciative of the collaboration that goes along with our committee and our administration. But I think the collaboration is based on hard work, transparency, and clarity. Okay? So, so these school committees, you know, I, I, I can only say that some of the feistiness that I've seen, borderlines in my personal mind, my judgment, my judgment alone, is unreasonable and, and not listening. It's just, you want to hear the stories, and it's only a story from one lens, you know? But I'm hearing it like, how is that happening? And so I, I was taken aback, I have been over time. And sometimes it happens in a session, right? Someone will ask a question in a session, and out of the blue, the question gets steered to, that, that's not permitted in our committee or something. And I'm like, how does that happen? So, so I agree with that, too. I'd mentioned two other things from the, that I took. I mentioned one already was virtual reality. And the goggles. So I didn't forget that. I really didn't forget that, because I think there's a future to that, and that's, there's going to be something there. And I, I hope I explained it well the last time, but they showed an example of a virtual reality where the goggles were on and the person had to pick and choose things, and it was moving units. It was moving cylinders and units. And I could see it being an exciting, real life moment if, if a person could put goggles on, of where you're moving this third to that third or things like that. It was filling the cylinder. So it was very intriguing. And, you know, I think there's something there as a future. But the, the one, my biggest takeaway was a very general session by Justin Reich, who was, had wrote a book called Failure to Disrupt. I think that was the book. Was that the book? Yeah, that was the book he had there. He's wrote a couple of books. But okay, anyways, he was talking about disruption of technology and where it's at. And the concept was, is that everyone thought and still says that technology is the, the, the end all and will change everything and do this and do that. And he spent a lot of time talking about ChatGPT, which is the, does everyone know what that is? Now, I haven't, I haven't used it a lot, but if you don't know what ChatGPT is, do you know what ChatGPT is? It is absolutely amazing. Is, is it not amazing? But, but amazing in a, in a very powerful way. Okay, so, but his, his talk was really to keep explaining, he's a professor at MIT as well, and his, his thought was to keep explaining that it can only do so much. Okay? It's not, it's not an independent thinker. How can I say that? It's not a human mind, independent thinker. It is a spitter back of information, but it mines and serves the information faster than we could ever dream of. Right? But, but it doesn't, it doesn't spit it back. So he was talking, I think, I think the whole concept that he was trying to say is that there is technology there, we talk about it. He gave some weird examples, if you say this and do it, something off, off kilter happens. But he was trying to say that it's not, it's not, it's not, it wasn't, it's not the, the magic that people might think it is. Yeah, and to be very cautious in how you apply it and use it. And I thought that was great. And, and I guess I would translate to, to schooling, in, in that it, it says the same thing about schooling, right? It's not just the technology. Technology gives us access, gives us an avenue or a funnel to a spot, but it's not the end all. So I, I thought that's where he was going. Yeah, it was kind of a fascinating when he talked about it. He had, he had some hilarious examples of if he said the words in a right way into ChatGPT, that it came back like, on like another planet, you know? So it, it was, it was, it was a great, but I thought that was a great session, because I thought everyone was captivated on him. I can tell you right now, if he, if he was offering a course, I would take his course in a heartbeat. He was wonderful. He was just wonderful. So, but, but those moments happen. And those general sessions at the MASC conference can really bring us around to vision and, and some, some of the broader topics that impact edu- education, especially in the Commonwealth. That was my takeaway from, from this one. So, but you've done it a couple of times, and again, it is a fire hose. Because you, you look at your book, and there's five things you could go to at the same time, and you don't know which one to go to.
So much content. I really missed, I missed going this year, but maybe next.
Maybe next year, yeah. And I, that's what I enjoy going to, to experience and get around with people. So. Dr. Burdus, you were there as well? Any, anything to add, or?
I, I think, Michelle, you made some really good points. That's one of the things that I always take away is any of the sessions, since it's the joint conference with the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, listening to the questions that school committee members ask. That's very helpful to be able to see, well, where are different people coming from and the questions they ask? It helps us think about what we need to do as far as to further, you know, if it's explaining programs or what the important pieces that are there. So it is a lot of information. To your point, lots to choose from. Definitely loved the MIT professor. And one of my takeaways from that is, and that was at the very beginning of his talk, when he asked, you know, what do people in the audience know about artificial intelligence or ChatGPT? And then he had us kind of do a turn and talk with whoever you were around. And then he came back, and the, my takeaway was, he said, did, did anybody use the word that it, you know, it thinks? Or did anybody use, you know, and he gave a couple of different examples, and nobody in that huge room with all of those hundreds of people, nobody raised their hand. And that was his point, that, and to your point, Richard, it's, it's technology, but it goes back to the teachers and what they're doing and how they're planning with the technology. And it's really the utilization of that and the thinking, the critical thinking piece, and taking information and synthesizing that and deciding what is accurate and what is not is really important. So, and then there were the other sessions, like the Department of Education is there with the MCAS and the changes in the science, you know, test and how they're trying to cut back on time. So of course, that all, you know, interests me as well. But a lot of information. But it, it was a really good conference. I walked away thinking every session that I went to was something to be able to take back and bring back to our, you know, district.
Yeah, very good. Well, thank you. I'm glad we could at least, you know, come back and bring a few things to. Yeah, yeah. And thank, thank you all for going in the, in the past as well as, as this past year. Next on the agenda is acceptance of donations. I think we have a couple, is it a couple instrument donations?
Turn it over to Bill.
So two families stepped forward to offer donations of some very nice pieces of equipment. Heather Scarducci basically had two pieces, a Yamaha two twenty one student model flute and a CB Ludwig percussion kit that she'd like to donate and that the music department would truly like to have. And Curtis Raymond would like to donate a pearl bell set. You know, not, you know, it's not like it's a hundred thousand dollar type thing, but they're nice pieces to have within the, the thing, and they're in great condition from what Kami installed us, so.
Can we, we can accept them all together? Can we accept all the music donations, or do we have to do each separately?
I think you can.
They're all in the same, they're all in the same memo, so.
I move to accept with great gratitude the donations from Heather Scarducci and Curtis Raymond as detailed in the memo put forward by Kami Tudoldi.
I second.
A motion by Brent and seconded by Sarah. Any further questions or discussion on the motion to accept the music donations? Seeing and hearing none. In favor, four, zero.
Thank you.
Zero. Thank you.
Really? That's wonderful.
Second donation is from the New England Patriots Foundation. It's an honorarium for Coach Jack Martinelli of a thousand dollars to be used towards athletic endeavors for the Foxborough High School. And no other strings to it, just in his name.
Go ahead.
I move to accept with gratitude the generous donation of a thousand dollars from the New England Patriots Foundation in honor of Coach Jack Martinelli.
I second.
Motion by Brent, seconded by Sarah. Couldn't be given to a greater person. Great person Jack is for many, many years of leading art students. Unbelievable. All in favor? Four, zero, zero. Thank you.
May I just add one other piece under kind of that donation? So I had mentioned about the, the donation, if you will, or from the tickets from the football game, from the organization. So if you don't have it in front of you, I have it over in that folder to give you, just as a copy of the thank you letter that we've sent as a thank you. So it kind of makes sense under that topic.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Notification of community events. Here we go. Yeah, let's do it.
We have some really fun, exciting things going on with the recreation department. I'm going to pull it, pull it up, so don't forget. Gingerbread houses and Christmas cookies are coming up. We have the little wreckers that are doing them and the older kids in the mornings on Friday, December fifteenth and Friday, December twenty second. The little wreckers are in the morning, and K through six is in the evening. So, and thank you, I just want to thank all the recreation department for their hard work and Mark Craig at the town side. They do some amazing projects and amazing, amazing things. And thank you to this board for putting me there. So I get to look through that lens, and I just want to take it back here and tell everybody, because it's awesome, and they're not, they're not televised. You know, you can pull the minutes if you want to, but I'm here to tell you, it's great. And they do some amazing things. One other thing I want to bring up is the Community Cousins Program. Chantel, Willie, and myself have been communicating. I do have a community cousin, she's adorable. But there is some serious need out there. I think there's seventeen students right now and going, and we, we have winter sports. You've mentioned concerts coming up. These students have very long days. And really, it's just a little reprieve during the day after school, so kids aren't loitering around at schools. They have a place to go, they can have a snack, they can do their homework. Maybe their parents can't get to their concert or can't get to their game in time, you know? Even if it's a ride, you know, reach out to Chantel, just Google Community Cousins. It should be on our website at the Foxborough Public Schools. But I really implore anyone who's hanging in there long enough to watch this, I implore you all to consider being a community cousin. The commitment could be very low, but call Chantel and ask her, because it's been a great experience for us and our families. So hopefully everyone will consider it and help out a student, you know, just give them a little break during the day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others in the committee? Michelle, nothing at this time? Brent?
Nothing.
Nothing for me. Dr. Burdus? Motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I second.
Seconded by Michelle, motion by second. Sarah, seconded by Michelle. All in favor? Four, zero, zero. Meeting's adjourned. Good night, and thank you.